Okay, good evening and welcome to the February 7th Board of Education meeting. If everyone would join me to a pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we will begin this evening with the report of the superintendent, Dr. Byrne.
Thank you very much. Good evening and thank you for joining us for our February 7th Board of Education meeting. Given the February break taking place the week of February 20th, we have two back-to-back Board of Education meetings scheduled this month, tonight and again next Tuesday, February 14th. Come spend Valentine's Day with us here in the Rye Middle School MPR. I can't promise it will be romantic, but it will be informational.
It will not be romantic.
It's also our second open topics forum session of the school year, so we hope some community members will come out with some questions and comments for our Board of Education trustees. Tonight kicks off the official budget season here in the district. This evening we'll have the presentation of the superintendent's recommended budget for the 2324 school year. For the next two Board of Education meetings thereafter, we'll hear specific presentations about areas of interest to the public. Next week we'll learn about the curriculum and special education areas of the budget. On March 7th, we will learn about the technology, athletics, and facilities portions of the budget. On March 18th, Saturday, March 18th, we will hold our annual Community Budget Cafe. This is an event held here in the MPR on a Saturday morning, and members of the community are invited to come and rotate between tables dedicated to particular segments of the budget. So please mark your calendars. And that concludes my report for this evening.
Okay, thank you. So we will move on to our budget presentation, presentation and discussion number one. Dr. Byrne.
Okay. So we will begin the budget process, the formal presentation of the budget over the next couple of months. As always, we will present budget information throughout the community in a variety of sessions here at the Board of Education meetings, as well as out in the community with our annual roadshow, where we will visit different areas in the community and make budget presentations. We do always look to the Rye commitment as we build our budget. We are focused, our work, on accomplishing the goals and achieving the tenets of the Rye commitment. I'm pleased to say that this is a tax cap compliant budget. It is fiscally sound. It maintains all programs while addressing increased costs, inflation, and particularly healthcare cost increases. You may have seen lots of media coverage around school funding, and I just wanted to point one piece out about that as we advance in the conversation. You'll see lots of information out there about the fully funding, Part II, fully funding of foundation aid. Foundation aid is the main component of the aid that's received by school districts from the state, but it is just one component of the foundation, of the funding formula. So this year you'll see an increase in our foundation aid of $66,000. But in the seven other categories of state aid, which while they are in aggregate smaller categories, there's a decrease of $228,000. So when you look at our overall state aid package, there's a significant reduction, although there is a foundation aid increase. That being said, just to review a couple of the main components, the pillars, as we call them, of the school budget. We have our contractual obligations for our five bargaining units. We look at our program, the course offerings, the curriculum, student support programs, and our professional learning opportunities, our enrollment, which dictates our staffing, and then our infrastructure, which is facilities, technology, and support staff. And as we do each year, we abide by our operating standards as we build the budget, excellence in teaching and learning. And while many will identify and say COVID-19, we're past the pandemic, that standard is still there because there are still areas reflected in this budget that are post-COVID and things that we need to be focused on as a school district. So keeping that commitment to the lower elementary, lower sizes of classes at the elementary level to help kids that may have lost a bit and need extra support, our mental health supports that have been put in place and that are being widely used by our students, including the supports from ESS, our intense progress monitoring of students. So we're keeping an eye on kids who may be struggling a bit and working very hard to monitor their progress and provide the appropriate interventions when we identify a student that's below benchmark at the elementary level. You know, as you go through our operating standards, they really are what is valued most in our school district and our community and is what's helpful to us as we build this budget. So as we proceed this evening, Gabby Peruccio will be doing much of the presenting of the details, and I'll be jumping in and out of the presentation. So Gabby.
Thank you. So as we look at the different budget drivers as we embark on developing the budget for the upcoming school year, some of the known drivers that we take into consideration as we're doing the building is the tax cap, our collecting bargaining unit provisions, retirement system, health insurance premiums, use of fund balance, state aid, facilities concerns, technology needs, and of course debt service changes. The unknowns, as we call them, is enrollment, our special education and associated transportation needs, because we, that is a very specialized, individualized program that we build per student, our non-tax revenues, as well as assessment tax valuations. So just to remind everyone, the budget development process starts with the tax cap calculation, which takes the existing years or existing budget's tax levy, and it goes through an eight-step manipulation, applying our growth tax rate as well as the inflation rate, or 2%, whichever is, well, it's a max of 2%. So this year, the calculation for Rye City started with a growth rate of 1.0147, and because the inflation may, excuse me, inflation rate is upwards of 8%, that multiplying factor remains at 2%. Once you apply the exclusions, and actually it's the differential of exclusions from one year to the next, exclusions include debt service payments and any capital expenditures that are supported by the budget, which is your transfer to capital line, less any building aid that you would receive, as well as any pilot payments that come in. So when you apply the 8% or, excuse me, the eight-step calculation to Rye City School District, we have an allowable tax levy of $92,646,808, which translates into a 3.19% for the tax levy. And again, as Eric stated, this is a tax cap compliant budget that we're presenting. Having said that, that would mean in order to be successful, we would require a 50% plus one vote approval. Should we assume that we were going to override, it would require a supermajority approval As we look at the known factors as they apply to the 2324 budget, we note here that we anticipate the ERS contribution rate will be increasing from 11.6% to 13.1%, and we would be experiencing a decrease for TRS from 10.5% to 9.76%. It's important to note that 85% of our district staff participates in the TRS pension. How that translates in terms of expenses that we anticipate going into the 2324 school year, we expect that TRS will be slightly decreasing and ERS will be slightly increasing. However, we are still talking about upwards of $5 million expenditure that we expect for the new school year. When we look at our health benefit expense related to health services, health insurance that we provide for our employees, we are anticipating an 8% increase in premiums, which will be translating into an approximate expenditure of $12.48 million going into the 2324 school year. Up from where we stand right now, anticipating by the end of this school year, $11.5 million in expenditures. On our revenue side, one of the elements that we look at very closely is our state aid. As you can see, we anticipate that state aid for the upcoming 2324 school year, we estimate that we will be seeing a decrease in that projection. Student enrollment, this is always one of those mysteries, but we try to do our best. I think one of the first things that we need to point out is when we look at student enrollment and we take a snapshot of where we are in the current year, we always rely on beds data, which is the moment in time that we report back to the state early in October of what our student enrollment is at that time. We then, for the purposes of doing the enrollment projection, we rely on demographers. So actually, we work with a company called Decision Insight, and they actually take a number of factors related to Rye City, the state in general and overall, to come up with what the enrollment projection is for next year and future years. We use their very conservative model in terms of enrollment, and I say that because we are scheduled to receive 236 kindergarten students anticipated for the 2324 school year, which again was the very conservative model, because had we gone with the moderate model, they were projecting 250, which is something that we are not used to seeing.
But you do go back, our current fifth grade is at 226 right now. We have 238 in our current eighth grade. So it's, it's not a number that would be foreign to us, but it is a surprisingly high jump, although we did see a significant jump this year from the projections to the number of students who actually arrived in September and registered with us. So that's something we're going to monitor very carefully.
But that, the 2324 K number is, is that still just a projection or that's based on?
That's just a projection. We, we begin registration, I believe it's February 27th.
At the end of the month, yes.
But our, you know, we've already talked with our principals, and there is a lot of outreach already happening from the individual schools to identify our incoming kindergartners. Certainly, they gather information from our families that are already here, and then literally ask if you know of anyone else who has an entering kindergartner, please have them get in touch with us so that we could start building those numbers. So that's something that we pay close attention to, and we have moved that registration window opening to earlier and earlier in the year so that we can get that information. We also do a lot of outreach to the local preschools so that we can get families in contact with the school district to begin the registration process.
And for the 2223, what was the final projection for K? And I mean, it actually was 202. What was the projection?
I think it was 180.
Yeah.
It was, it was a significant difference.
Right.
Yeah, I believe it was 180. So as we look on the next slide, we, you know, we make our decisions about what the number of sections on each grade level based on those projections and based on the existing classes that we have right now. So there are instances where we have a grade level that as they're in the lower primary grades, may have small classes, and you may have a grade level with four sections that when they go into third grade, it becomes three sections, and that happens periodically. What this, the purpose of this illustration is to show what we're thinking about in terms of the numbers in each class. And what it also shows is we will be going into the spring, watching those numbers carefully at the kindergarten level so that we make any necessary staffing decisions. If we do need to hire any positions, then we watch those numbers carefully and do that at the appropriate time. You know from past years, we've added kindergarten classes over the summer because we see a high number of students enrolling, and that's if we need someone. If we needed to transfer someone, we would, but we're looking at that every Thursday. I get a report from our registrar, Wendy Wells. We sit down, we review the numbers, and I talk with the principals about whether or not we need to consider any staffing changes. What we also do is we monitor carefully anyone that's moving out of the district, so we don't just look at the numbers coming in, we also look at the numbers coming out, so if there are any shifting requirements for staffing at any of the grade levels. And you'll see, as I mentioned earlier, one of the things that we've been quite thoughtful about is keeping the class sizes a bit on the lower side in the elementary level because of the impacts of COVID and being, trying really hard to provide kids with the appropriate supports that they need.
So when we talk about the budget to budget increase from the 2223 school year to 2324, we are looking at a 4.4 increase with an overall budget of $103,899,502. And again, this is a tax cap compliant budget. This is a snapshot of our categories in which we place our anticipated expenses, just to give an overall overview. We look at salaries and benefits often together totaling $80 million going into the 2324 school year, general instruction, special education, athletics, technology, curriculum development, transportation, district-wide support, facilities, debt service, and inter-fund transfers, which is where you would find the transfer to capital that we often talk about, for a total budget again of $103,899,502. As you can see here, the biggest portion of our budget is salaries and benefits, as illustrated with, with the pie chart. Notable anticipated expenses that are going to be increasing going into the 2324 school year include salaries and benefits, as we spoke about, the contractual obligations around our salaries and benefits. Most notable is the 8% increase in healthcare contributions.
And I would just say, so we are part of a consortium called SwissCHIP, which we're very fortunate because the management of SwissCHIP is, is done by the local school districts that participate. So there are really good thoughtful conversations among that board in making decisions about healthcare costs and increases and being good fiscal stewards of the plan. NYSHIP, which is the New York State Insurance Program, which is the other program that the majority of school districts are in, so there's SwissCHIP, which is a smaller one, and NYSHIP, which is a larger one. Unfortunately for districts that are in NYSHIP this year, that's a over 15% increase in their costs. So for us, it's really challenging, the 8% increase when you look at, at that amount of money. But we're just fortunate that we have a good plan that is managed well, and the increase is only 8% at this point in time, which we're greatly appreciative of.
What's driving the, the facilities increase? Because on a percentage basis, that looks to be.
I'm so glad you asked. So most notably, the largest piece of that increase is approximately $360,000 that we're estimating in utilities and fuel costs that we anticipate going up. In what we're seeing, and what we're using, and what we're paying this year, we are looking at that very closely, and I say thank you because Mother Nature has been kind to us. But what we've been seeing in utility costs and increases have just been really crushing us. Additionally, we're looking at increased supply costs just to keep our buildings going. You'd be amazed at what toilet paper and paper towels coming in the door and the increases around that. We have existing contractual expenses around landscaping, a mulching plan, tree work, some really, you know, pointed paving that we need to do getting around the district that we are anticipating, again, expenses going up in that area to the tune of $147,000. We also have some vehicles that are aging, so we've added some funds in. You'll actually see it's a, in addition to, on, on tonight's agenda, we're actually approving, because we actually got our hands on a vehicle through a mini bid through New York State contract, and we were lucky enough to grab a truck in upwards of $57,000, which the last time we purchased a vehicle, that was $37,000. So we are really seeing costs skyrocket in that area, and we're just trying to make sure that we are prepared, especially with a lot of our new spaces, making sure that we have the funds to maintain and keep that going. We thank the board because you will also see incoming agendas that we're going to be appointing and expanding our maintenance department so that we can do many of these things in-house and take care of the facilities as they're needed.
But Rob Gimmigliano will be doing a presentation on the facilities budget in a few weeks.
So now the revenue side, because if we're talking about spending $103 million next year, we have to have the revenues to back that up. So property taxes obviously makes up the largest portion of that. We have payments in lieu of taxes coming in at $76,805, interest and penalties on taxes, county sales tax. We've seen that, there was actually legislation that increased the county sales tax during COVID, so it's been a little bit difficult to try to predict what that number was going to look like. So this past year was our first year really getting a good sense of what that was like fully implemented. Based on those projections and what we're seeing coming in right now, I feel very comfortable that we can increase that revenue line to $1.6 million. Utility tax also, obviously we're seeing higher rates in utilities, so therefore we're experiencing higher revenues in that area. Charges for services remains pretty close. Interest earnings, obviously interest rates are going up on the borrowing side, but they're also going up on the savings side, so we're realizing some help there. Miscellaneous revenues, this is something that has increased over the last few years in the way we record our healthcare contributions. So the portion that our employees contribute to healthcare is actually realized as revenue, and it's considered part of miscellaneous revenues. So that is why you see an increase there. State sources, that is your state aid line. Again, when you're looking at this, although we are projecting an overall decrease in state aid, it's taken at a moment in time, so it's looked at right now and what we're realizing what state aid is today, meaning for 2223. But the number here that's being represented for 2223 was what the estimate was at this time last year when the executive budget went out, and that's how we built our revenue budget, if that makes sense. Anticipated use of fund balance, this is an area where we are going to be experiencing or projecting an increase from $2.3 million to $2.7 to support the overall budget of $103,899,502.
Gabby, can I ask a?
Sure.
Clarification question?
Yeah.
Just to make it clear, because we talked about the budget to budget change is a 4.44%.
Correct.
And that's the 99 million, the last line item here, the 99 million last year to the 103 million.
Yes.
But just to go back to the, one of the earlier slides about the tax levy.
Yes.
Because I do get that question.
Yes.
So the 4.44, that's the total number at the bottom, but in terms of the property taxes, that's the tax levy.
Correct.
And that's a 3.19, and that is the 92 million at the top.
Right.
So I, just to clarify, because I think that people, when they hear the 4.4, that's actually the bottom line number.
Right. The budget to budget 4.4 is the expenditure, so it's the outlay, and the property tax increase of 3.19% is on the revenue side of collecting the property taxes. It doesn't include all the other revenue sources.
Yes, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. So district reserve funds, this is where that, the support of the $2.7 million comes from. Just to give a sense of the different reserves that the district has available to them and where we draw that anticipated $2.7 million to support the budget. So a portion would come from the ERS, the TRS reserves, and the undesignated. I went too fast, sorry about that. So per pupil cost.
So we show this number every year just to give a snapshot of where we are in comparison to some of our other peer districts, and it essentially is taking the, the overall budget and dividing it by the number of students. There's a few other parts of the calculation, but if you look at what our per pupil cost is, and this is the latest data that we have it from, it's from the Westchester Putnam School Boards Association, it's $29,584. And so as we get to the end of the presentation, just to look at the historical budget to budget increases, last year we saw a budget to budget increase of 5.56%, and then we were at 2% or below for a couple of years, and in 1819 at 2.67%. And this year it is a proposed budget with an increase, a budget to budget increase of 4.44%. And these have all been tax cap compliant budgets from 2018, actually even before that, there was an override, I believe, that was the 2014, was it the 2014?
I think.
But we have been tax cap compliant, and we are once again presenting a tax cap compliant budget.
So Callie, just to reiterate here, so the tax levy increase is 3.19%, which is the 92,646,808 is what the actual tax levy that supports this budget. That's the difference between the two numbers. Total assessments as they stand right now are $135,964 million, which estimates the tax rate to be per thousand at $681.40.
And so we always welcome any questions or comments about the budget proposal. Any member of the community could email the Board of Education at rcsdboard@ryeschools.org, myself at burnderick@ryeschools.org, to gabby@peruccio.gabriella@ryeschools.org. And then if you can't remember any of those, feedback at rischools.org, and we will answer any questions or send back any information that is requested. We do have a calendar of upcoming presentation and events. So on February 14th, Dr. Murray and Dr. Redenberg will present their budget proposals for curriculum and special education. On March 7th, Dr. Sassone, Ms. Reed-Dulay, and Mr. Gimmigliano will present technology, athletics, and facilities. On March 18th, we will have the Community Budget Cafe. March 21st, there'll be a formal resolution for budget adoption from the board and any changes at that point in time. May 2nd will be the budget hearing for the community, and on Tuesday, May 16th, will be the budget vote and the trustee election.
Would you say, I mean, looking at this, it seems like the main driver this year is inflation, is that?
Yep.
Yeah. Going back to the projected enrollment, if we look out in future years, the numbers get, let's just say, interesting. Do you give much credence to those, or?
You know, that's, that's a, that's a really interesting question, because not too long ago, the, when you looked out, the numbers were decreasing. And I've likened demographers to meteorologists, and it, it is just a very. and it is just a very challenging thing. The good part is that overall, when you're looking at the enrollment, where most of our enrollment is based on who's here right now, and then the typical attrition in, the movement in, the movement out, that we could typically account for every year, it's the kindergarten numbers, and that's something that we watch carefully. So, it's, you know, we've switched vendors for projections, and we still get the same kind of information, but it really is, it, I, they claim to use sophisticated software to figure this all out. I'm not sure if the sophisticated software does any better than my magic eight ball.
Yeah, I'd be curious to see if in 20, in '31, '32, we have 430 kindergarten students and 112th graders.
That'll be a lot of people.
Yeah.
But I do recall a conversation years ago, when, when the district made the decision to go with Decision Insight, and there was some, some belief that if we use them for a certain period of time, that perhaps then we could at least, at the very least, do kind of a-
That the numbers would be more reliable?
No, certainly not, not with a magic eight ball. But if you just do a reflective review and to say, okay, in these years, somewhat close, because I can't imagine Tom and I are the only two people in the room who see those numbers and go, oh, my gosh.
Yeah, I, if COVID hadn't happened, I, maybe I could have answered your question better, but I do think that COVID has completely changed what these numbers look like. I've never seen them jump like this from year to year, because even with the Decision Insight, they always give us, you know, these are off the charts.
But we have seen some-
And again, and this is the conservative model.
Right, but we have seen some shifts. I mean, looking at that shift in kindergarten this year, anecdotally, what we've heard is that there are a lot of entering kindergarteners coming down the pike to us. We know that the current kindergarten class, when we did the analysis, 55% were families with the first child coming into the school system. That is a much higher percentage of new families than we've had in a very long time. So, there, there is a, certainly a possibility that we could be looking at something between the 202 and the 236 at this point in time. Obviously, that's something we need to watch very carefully over time.
Do they have a white paper on their model, like what the inputs are? I'm curious, I mean, they've never, have never seen it. Bit of a modeling geek.
If you look in the middle of it, I mean, some of the, some of the year-over-year, they just, it's like, they don't make any sense. I mean, I'm not saying the whole thing doesn't make sense, but some of the individual move from one cell to the other, like, and you're just like, this doesn't, I don't know what they're projecting.
I think if you, if you looked at last year's presentation and saw the decrease, none of that would make sense. I think the bigger, bigger question I have is, like, maybe there's a threshold, since we hit 200?
Maybe.
That somehow that-
It triggers.
Maybe, maybe, and that it puts you in a different bracket, per se.
I don't know.
The multiplier, I don't know.
It's fascinating to me.
I love how you're reaching for any kind of rationale.
But it's fascinating to me that I, for now, I think it was the past at least three years.
Yes.
We were down to like 100 and something, 150 maybe?
Yeah, yeah.
At, once, by the time we got to 20, 31, 32.
Yes.
And I think the most important piece of all of this is clearly, it's, draws attention to possibilities that perhaps we didn't anticipate or think could be, and so it's good to have forward-thinking information, and that we can be really, really honed in on how can we get our most own personal data, to your point, Dr. Burn, and the 55% of our current kindergarteners being the oldest in their families. And certainly, the real estate market were, was out of control the last two years, and maybe that'll tamp down, and who knows, but at least it's on our radar.
It certainly is.
We'll keep, keep that in our minds, eyes. Are there any other questions that any other board members have at this point, based on this information that we are presented with?
I think the only other question I have is related to, I know last year, our, one of our driving factors was our debt service number, and it's not as much of a driving factor this year, because it's a smaller increase on top of where we were.
Right, so, the change from year to year in debt service looks to be almost flat. However, behind the curtain of that is, we actually did have a drop-off of debt service this year, approximately 1.2 million. However, as we start to realize the expense or debt service expense around supporting the construction related to the 79.9 million, so, the payments that we incurred as a result of that took, kind of took the place of the drop-off of debt, so it looks flat from year to year, but that's because we're taking on some new debt around that, which, again, next year, we'll see an increase in debt service. The next drop-off we would see of old debt would be actually 2029. So, there was, this was the opportunity, and this was something certainly that we anticipated and looked at, taking the opportunity of two years in a row of debt service dropping off, because it, we had a little bit of drop-off last year, we knew this was coming this year, so the introduction of debt related to the 75.9 million, 79.9 million, was expected, and thankfully, we are keeping it steady at this point.
But that, this, so we won't have another drop-off now for several years?
Correct.
29.
Gabby, help me, the benefits increase, I think is a total of 1.9 million. I see the health benefit going up from 11.5 to 12.8, so 900 plus.
Where did I?
And TRS actually dropping a little bit. I'm missing a million bucks in benefits, but I don't, I'm clearly missing something.
So, benefits are increasing, you have unemployment, not unemployment, you have workers' compensation contributions, they're increasing, you have, let me think about what else is going into that number.
ERS and TRS.
ERS, ERS.
TRS is going down a little bit.
No, ERS is going up, TRS is going down.
But ERS is only 20% of our-
Correct.
There are some other contractual obligations in there, related to welfare funds, that we anticipate are going up. I'm trying to think what else goes into that number, some-
Don't know if you don't right now, but at some point.
No, benefit, yeah.
A little more detail would be helpful, because that's just a big, that's a huge chunk of it.
Benefit payout, yeah.
Yeah.
There's a couple of other increases in there.
I'm sure, I'm sure those pieces, I'm just not seeing in the generalities here, so that'd be helpful to have a little more clarity on that.
Yep.
Okay, I know, personally, I look forward to the opportunities to hear from the different department heads and, district-level administrators regarding the different buckets for the budget. So, I, while they're certainly more time-consuming presentations and meetings, I think they really do provide us a great oversight and insight into workings of the district and the major components that are driving our budget, and then really do have the most beneficial impact for our students and our community. So, I look forward to those presentations coming up, and I hope others will be able to join us for those as well. Just thank you.
All right, so, thank you all for that presentation. We look forward to learning more in the next few weeks and months ahead. So, moving on to our next agenda item, which is the Hearing of the Public on Non-Agenda Items. We welcome and encourage our community members to address the board at this time. Please come to the podium, state your name and address, and if you are representing an organization. To ensure everyone has the opportunity to speak, please limit your remarks to three minutes. I'm going to ask our district clerk to set a timer for three minutes, so if you hear the timer, please wrap it up. The board is here to listen. The public comment period is not designed to be a discussion, so please understand that we may not respond publicly to your comments or questions at this time. We take your comments seriously and may need more time to process and research an issue. We will ensure questions will be addressed by the appropriate staff member or possibly answered at a future board meeting. We will not entertain comments regarding individual students or district personnel, as these are protected under state and federal laws. Please know, we take personnel concerns very seriously. On these matters, we would ask you to follow the appropriate administrative channels. As a reminder, the community may submit written comments at any time to the board by sending those to rcstboard@rysschools.org. If there's anyone from the public who'd like to speak, please come forward.
Good evening, everyone, how are you?
Good evening.
Hello, Angelia Beaman, 12 High Street, Rye, New York. I'm the aunt of a student here in the Rye District. I know that next week, we're going to get a little bit more into IEPs and special location budget concerns, but being that it's Valentine's Day, I hope that you guys are able to at least give me some top-line insights and feedback. My first question, budgeting during the year, removing the rise in new students needing services, whether it be IEP or special education, moving to the district, how do you plan to budget for these additional expenses, and from where will you redirect additional funds to ensure required services are provided?
So, this is, we'll certainly be able to get that information back to you. As I said in my comments, it's not a time for us to necessarily respond on, at, during your comment period, but we will most certainly be able to get replies back to you. We can have the administrative, administrators gather that information, and if you leave us your email address, we can certainly get that information to you.
Okay, awesome. And just another question, are there any appropriate circumstances where a student may be deemed unteachable within the Rye School District, where they may need to be redirected to a different school?
I can answer, I can speak to one piece. I can't envision or imagine a time or a place in our school district where we would ever deem a student to be unteachable. There certainly is information about how students can receive services through other, if there are other places that perhaps can provide better, different level of services to meet a need, but again, that's something that we can have the administration get back to you directly.
Sure. And then my last question, are there any students who are presently being serviced outside of district, or have, have been redirected to different schools in the past?
And we can get that information to you as well.
Great.
Okay.
Thank you.
And perhaps if you could just leave your email address with Dr. Arm, that'd be wonderful.
Thank you.
Certainly, thank you. Is there anyone else from the public at this time? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to our next agenda item, which is the Consent Agenda. Can I have a motion to accept the Consent Agenda? Tom Stein, seconded by Chris Repetto. All right, Consent Agenda General.
I don't have a question, but I'll just point out that we are approving some policies in Consent Agenda General.
Thank you, Policy Chairwoman.
Yes.
Appreciate it. Consent Agenda Fiscal? Consent Agenda Professional? Consent Agenda Classified? Consent Agenda Special Education? Okay, seeing no questions, can I have a vote, please, to accept the Consent Agenda? All those in favor? That would be six, nothing, one absence, so the Consent Agenda is approved. On this evening's Consent Agenda, we approved the district calendar for '23, '24. Please note that our last day of school is June 26th. Please remember that this date is set by the state, and the district has absolutely zero control over it. We know that this late date will most certainly affect some people in the community's summer plans, and we understand and appreciate that difficulty that this may cause. And again, if this was something that perhaps we could consider, we would and we can't, and so we are sorry. But, on a bright note about the calendar, we do get a longer winter break, so some of us are looking forward to that. Maybe not everybody, okay? This evening, for the Osborne School, the Osborne PTO has generously donated $15,000 in recess support, and $7,000 for cultural enrichment, so we appreciate the Osborne School PTO's support. Additionally, in tonight's Consent Agenda, we have hired a .4 Mandarin teacher. During typical times, hiring a .4 teacher is close to impossible. Add that this is a high-need, very specialty certification area is Mandarin, throw in a global teacher shortage, I find this to be an extremely commendable effort, and speaks highly, once again, to the commitment of our administration to work their networks and their connections to providing our students with the best possible education, and so we greatly appreciate that. Thank you. Moving on to our next agenda item, we have Presentation and Discussion Number Two, Policies.
Policies.
Jen Boyer, please, take it away.
I will. So, this is our second reading of several policies, a few of which are ones that came up as a result of our review, our general review we're doing to make sure our policies are up to date, and then there's actually a whole section of our special education policies that we did a proactive review on to make sure that they were all updated and had all of the information in them that's, that's required. So, we went through all of these in detail in our last meeting. As I noted then, the special education policies that we did have proactively reviewed, had very minor changes that needed to be made, and so, since this is a second reading, I'll just open it up if anyone has any other questions, or I did not receive any from our last meeting, so.
Oh, repeat them all, they all look fine.
I'm going to take that as a-
All good.
Non-question. Okay. So, we will then move these forward to our next meeting to be approved with changes.
Great. Great, thank you very much. Now, to communications to and from the board, as we note here, Policy met on February 1st, and we just received their update. Anything further that you'd like to share from that meeting?
We did, we had a few additional policies that we're going to be bringing forward on our meeting next Tuesday, on the 14th, and we are continuing to work through meeting with the neighbors regarding our light policy, and I think that might be it. There's just some additional policies that were, again, we're going through our review in general to make sure that we are up to date as much as possible, and then we had a few, there's a couple of additional changes that came down from NISBA, which is the New York State School Boards Association, with some updates, required updates, that will be reflected in our, the policies that come forward next week.
Okay, great, thank you.
You're welcome.
The Technology Committee met on January 26th, a report from the Technology Committee? Maybe it was from back there? Dr. Sassone, was there a board member in attendance at the Technology Committee?
I don't think there's any board member.
Okay, well, then, that's why we wouldn't have a board report. So, hopefully, we'll, we'll work out a way for us to get that information, and then we can present it at our next board meeting in this section of the meeting. Thank you. It looks like, actually, there's another technology meeting coming up on the 23rd, so we will most certainly get a board member for that meeting, in addition, Policy, and doesn't appear there will, there will be no other committee meetings prior to our next meeting, so we will have to wait a few weeks for some updates to and from the board. Okay, so, as Dr. Burn said, our next meeting is on Valentine's Day. We're all very excited to spend the evening together in a way that probably isn't how Valentine was intended, but that's okay. But, we very much look forward to the opportunities to hear from the different administrative and department heads related to the next sections of the budget, and we hope that you'll be able to join us here for that meeting on February 14th. Can I have a motion to conclude our meeting? Chris Repetto, seconded by Tom Stein, all those in favor? Six, nothing, with one absence. Thank you all very much, have a good evening.